It's a long minute. Good evening. I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome you to the public hearing to adopt the tentative millage and budget meeting this Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. The regular board meeting is scheduled to follow this meeting at 6:00 PM. The legal requirement under Florida statute 200.065 parent two parent E states that the school board of Sarasota County, Florida will soon consider a budget for 2023, 2024. A public hearing to make a decision on the budget and taxes will be held on August 1st, 2023 at 1980 Landings Boulevard, Sarasota, Florida. During such discussion, the governing body shall hear comments regarding the proposed millage rate. The general public shall be allowed to speak and ask questions prior to adoption of any measure by the governing body. The governing body shall adopt its tentative or final millage rate prior to adopting its tentative or final budget. Will please stand for the flag salute.
Through God, in indiscernible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know the first item of the agenda is moving on to the statements, but I know Mr. Connor wanted to start with a couple of comments if you'd like to begin.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment. I know there's been some community concerns over the wording of some specific goals and strategies that have been printed in the tentative budget. I'd like to take a moment to provide some clarity into the actual initiatives that are funded under goal two and the wording that is actually published under the tentative budget. I want to begin by talking about the budget development process. The draft strategic plan as presented in September of 2021 was incorporated into our budget software. So to provide clarity around that, there was a request to tie our specific initiatives that we were funding to the goals and strategies of the strategic plan. So in order to do that, some hard coding went into our budget software to attach strategic plan goals to specific initiatives that had been budgeted in the system. At that time, schools and departments were also in the process asked to align all their appropriations and their positions to a goal and a strategy. The budgeting software produced a report that summarized all of the budgeted goals and strategy numbers, and the wording was based on the original draft language back in 2021. So the first goal that has been a concern is fostering a healthy and supportive learning environment for all students. So as you dive into that goal, there is strategy A and B. In strategy A, the initial language presented back in September of 2021 was enhanced social and emotional learning supports provided to students to promote belonging, dignity, inclusion. At a workshop in March of '22, that language was revised during that workshop to enhance emotional and behavioral supports provided to students to promote belonging, dignity, and inclusion. And furthermore, as new legislation has come about, and you know, every iteration of legislation over the last few years requires that we take a look at our language to make sure that that language complies and is aligned to the newest legislation. So there is some revised language that has been proposed and has been posted on the website for consideration tonight to make sure that our budget is aligned in accordance and prescribed with state statute and rules. And you can see that language there for this particular strategy, which we can have further discussion about. But I want to really talk specifically about the money and where the funds are actually tied to, so people can understand what we are spending, the $56 estimated million dollars that are attached to this goal. So if you look at goal two, strategy A, there are $44.5 million in funded positions. That includes 402 ESC classroom support paraprofessionals and aides, ESOL of paras and the amount of 103 positions, 89 certified school counselors, 59 therapists, media center support at 40, social workers at 20, classroom aid support at 15, student services district support at 12, and a behavioral specialist, for a total of $44.5 million. Also, there are appropriations, that total of $13 million, and those include community services such as after-school childcare, that is our fee-based programs with an estimated $2.2 million, financial aid of about $1 million, and the internal accounts at each school, which fund our extracurricular activities and our field trips of almost $7 million. We also, in this appropriation, in this strategy A, also have a contract, which the board has approved with First Step, at $1.5 million. And then we have a contract for driver's education of $250,000. And I'm going to move to strategy B, which is also a concern. The initial draft language back in September of 2021 was to promote positive behavior through proactive education and restorative practices to promote belonging, dignity, and inclusion. Again, in March of 2022, at that workshop, that language was revised. And there is a new proposal for your consideration today around language to conform with state statute and rules. And we can have further discussion about that, but you can see that posted up here on the screen. So what are we funding in strategy B? So we are funding $7.3 million in positions. That includes 57.3 ESC aides as well as one ESOL aide. There are also appropriations in the amount of $13,750. That's for extra duties for some of the funded positions that we mentioned, as well as technology-related supplies and $250. So that is just as clear as we can be in terms of the actual line items that we are funding that are attached to those specific goals. I did want to talk about just our vetting process for the good of the order, so that people understand that anytime an expenditure is budgeted, it is a proposal. And that proposal comes forth in a variety of fashions to be vetted to make sure that we are in compliance and that we're not dealing with controversial topics or that we're doing anything that would be prohibited. And so when we're talking about appropriations that are below $10,000, we have it vetted at the executive director level. If it's between $10,000 and $50,000, that proposal is brought to the cabinet for deliberation and approval. And if it's over $50,000, it comes to the board for approval. In terms of textbooks and instructional materials, we have a very clear process to vet instructional materials that conforms with state statute. That includes committees and includes a very structured process that is outlined in our procedures. It includes parents, it includes district staff and teachers, and we are actually going through that process right now with much of our adopted materials for social studies and math. And we have those committees convening and going through that process. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware that we vet these expenditures very clearly, and if anything comes up that is potential problem, those things are brought back forth. You know, if something for some reason wasn't maybe controversial at one time and then is now, we will bring that back forth, review it, and make sure that it conforms with our priority as a board and conforms with the state rules and regulations. So I just want to share that with you today. I wanted to clear up some of that confusion around what that language was originally in the strategic plan. It was hardcoded, it needs to be updated, and we are prepared to update that language at the direction of the board. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Out across social media and a few different venues, there's been a lot of misinformation perpetuated using the term SEL and stating that we are voting tonight to incorporate SEL into our budget. And based on that, I did, and I'm going to ask legal counsel to jump in. I did ask legal counsel on Thursday morning to go through every line in our budget where it was referencing SEL and to assure me that we were within the intent of the legislation and every bill that has been signed by Governor DeSantis. So if I could ask Mr. Duggan to please jump in, in what that process looked like and the conclusion that occurred.
Mr. Duggan?
Yes, thank you. So on Thursday, this was brought to my attention that there might be some outdated language that perhaps was inconsistent with the most recent versions of the state statutes, which get passed every year, and interpretations that are frequently being put out by the Department of Education. I took a look at the language from the prior version of the strategic plan, and I looked at what the state statutes were, and we amended the language in the budget documents to be compliant with the current state of the law and the interpretations proffered by the Department of Education as part of that. So with that in mind, this was just wording changes. But if you do approve the budget based on the budget document with the amended language, it's my opinion that you would be approving a document lawfully because the language is consistent with what the current state of the law is.
Thank you very much. May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
With that in mind, and the confusion that has occurred with the language in a strategic plan that is obviously outdated and had the need to have language corrections, and I would like to make a proposal to my colleagues, to this board, that the strategic plan is placed on the next school board agenda to be placed on hold and put on pause until our superintendent Connor and staff can look with legal counsel to assure us that every component of that strategic plan is within the intent of the law. So I'm looking to my colleagues. I would like to have that on the next agenda if there is agreement, because I think having this misinformation and misinterpretation of what we're doing, it legitimately takes the focus off of academic achievement, something that I think that this whole community wants us to be focused in on, be in compliance with every letter of the law and the intent of the law, particularly when it comes to all the new legislation that has come out. So I think that is a piece that will benefit us if my colleagues are in agreement and give our superintendent and staff the ability to focus in on academic achievement while we are assuring all of the language in the strategic plan is, again, within the intent of the law.
If I may clarify, so you have a motion to halt or to add it to the agenda or both? Just want to clarify.
It's my understanding from legal counsel, because I did have this discussion in preparation for tonight, and what has occurred, again, in misinformation, and it's my understanding that it's legal counsel's recommendation, if I want to make this proposal, that I'm proposing it to be an agenda item on the next school board agenda to put the strategic plan on hold.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds there. So, all right. So the motion has been seconded. Are there any comments? I see Mr. Edwards on deck.
Yes, I have a couple of comments, but now that the motion's been made, my other comments were not part of the motion. So I'm going to stick with the motion and say I'd like to amend the motion to, I liked the word "pause," not "stop," not "halt," and I was more comfortable with the word "pause." In addition to that, I would say...
Can I stop you so I get, you're amending the motion? Can I get a second? Is there a second to the motion? To the amendment?
I'm sorry, could I have clarification from what it was?
The amendment is to strike the word "halt" and input "pause." Am I correct?
Yes.
Is there a second? I'll ask one more time if there's not a second. Okay, so the amendment dies. So we're still on "halt," if I'm correct. The maker of the motion to clarify.
Hold.
Hold.
Hold was the language I used.
Well, Mrs. Tompkins, can you read back? Do you have the, because the language matters, especially if we have an amendment request. Do we have the language?
I still have a comment about that.
Yes, I promise. Hold. Okay. So for the record, it's "hold" to the next agenda. Okay, Mr. Edwards?
In addition to that, I want to just thank Mr. Connor for what a beautiful explanation of what I perceive to be standard operating procedure. And I am often dismayed by the accusations and the misinformation and the conversations that go all over, including leading up to, I appreciate, "halt," "pause," "hold." The strategic plan, when a new superintendent comes on board, is naturally going to be revisited and updated and brought forward. So it would naturally occur. So I'm going to support this measure in spite of the language, but I just want to point out that there's so much accusation and mistrust, and that is frankly unwarranted. And if the community would actually find ways to get on the same page and support, could you imagine the force we could be? Could you imagine? So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, so just to clarify, I don't want to say the motion, so it's to, you moved to "hold," to put the strategic plan on hold and add it to the next agenda?
It is to, if I understand, legal counsel, can you jump in?
I'm sorry.
Because I understand it's to, the proposal is to add an agenda item to the next school board agenda to vote on putting the current strategic plan on hold until Superintendent Connor and his staff and legal counsel can work to ensure that that language in it is all in compliance or any other tweaks, as Mr. Edwards, whatever language. But legal counsel, I was taking your...
You want to restate something, summarize? I was writing.
So what I think the most transparent thing to do under the circumstances, so that the public can digest this and, like everything else, give public comment on their likes and dislikes with this, is to place this as an agenda item on the next board meeting, at which time you all will vote to whether you want to pause it, hold it, halt it, suspend it temporarily, until legal counsel and Mr. Connor, our new superintendent, have the opportunity to take a deep look at it. We've only had the last couple of days to kind of weigh in on this, but a deeper dive on it, and that will allow the opportunity to bring back a product that not only meets the strategic goals of Mr. Connor, but that also complies with the current iteration of the law, which does change from time to time.
Okay. So I'm just going to summarize here, so that we have, we're adding an item to the agenda for the strategic plan in general to be discussed, not "hold." I mean, that was just totally different. I want to make sure I can get what you want.
What I heard the motion to be was to place it on the next agenda, and I think with what Ms. Rose intended was to, on the next board meeting, have a vote by the board after public comment occurs, to temporarily halt the strategic plan until it can be revisited, updated, improved, those type of things.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. As the maker of the motion, if you're fine with that summary?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Duggan and Madam Chair, for spending time on this. I think it's very important for us to go forward.
Okay, so I have a motion to add the agenda item for the next regularly scheduled school board meeting, for the strategic plan to be on hold until further discussion. Is there a motion? There's a second. Are there any discussion items? Are we good? Okay, we'll do a voice vote. Mr. Enos is on with us virtually or on Zoom or over the phone, but I'll start with Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Are there any further discussion? Mrs. Rose?
On a new item, if there's any other comments from my colleagues, I don't want to jump to a new item.
I know Mr. Edwards had, no, okay.
Thank you. I just, there's been a lot of political banter out there that's causing distrust, and I'm going to say again with great passion that that gets in the way of academic achievement and very much needed improvement, that I'm very confident that Superintendent Connor can lead in reading and more. And reaching over to our budget department and this new budget, one of the things that I've really worked on and listened to the community was being transparent with school-based budgets and department budgets, and I want to give Mrs. Penner and her staff major kudos and thank you. I know how much work went into that, and you went through the process of getting feedback from board members, all board members on it, and I want the public to know that there's been a significant increase in transparency with school-based budgets and department budgets, and I want to recognize our finance department for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments before we proceed? Seeing none, we are moving on to the 2023 required local effort millage rate represents an 8.44% increase from last year's rolled-back millage rate. The total 2023 proposed millage rate represents a 10.20% increase from the last year's rolled-back millage rate. The operating millage is required to hire staff for the school district, pay negotiated salary, and fringe benefits to staff, the cost of fuel, electricity, and other goods and services. I believe, Mr. Connor, we have Mrs. Penner to present a PowerPoint? Nope?
No, we do not have a, we don't have a PowerPoint.
Well, then we'll move on to Hearing of Citizens. As I said in my notes, my apologies. Next up is a hearing of citizens. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you'll need to begin to summarize. Please stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, please listen politely, respectfully, and without making any signs of, sounds of approval or disapproval. We recognize there's a lot of passion, emotion, the decisions that come before the board, and the impact that they have on our students, families, and staff and community. As such, we believe it is important that we afford the opportunity for every speaker to be heard. To my fellow board members, please hold any comments during Hearing of Citizens until after they have concluded, to which you may want to respond. My request is that you respond, when you respond, you keep it to the issue that has been brought forward and refrain from directing it to any individual member of the public. Per statute, per statute 1001.372 parent three, anyone causing a disruption will first be given a warning, and if the conduct does not stop, you will be asked removed from the chambers. We have five comments, I believe. First up is Lila Newcom.
I'm on hold. I think everything that's happened, my speech...
Okay, so I put this aside. All right, very good. Sebastian Martinez?
Okay.
Mary Andrews? You guys are making, we're moving through. Okay. And then after Mary Andrews, Shannon Clements.
Good afternoon, Honorable Sigler and new superintendent and other board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm adding this because it is a budgetary issue, as you just discussed, on approving instruction with a $57 million funded in positions. So my name is Mary Andrews. I am a 57-year-old elementary and middle school teacher with exemplary reviews, evaluations, credentials, and have been teaching in the Sarasota County schools for over 18 years. On November 3rd, 2021, I was assaulted by a student in my classroom. Police reports are on record, and protocols were complied with as required without any significant action being taken. Ultimately, I was asked to stay home and not talk to anyone, in lieu of the administration looking out for me. Then was asked to take a psychological exam with the school board retained firm that provides the service for the school board. I was found to be unfit for duty after being assaulted while I was dealing with trauma and apparent inaction by said administration. Later, I discovered that erroneous information had been given to the psychologist that evaluated me, where I was ultimately deemed unfit and was told to obtain treatment. This discovery of the erroneous information surfaced after my treatment was complete, and I was subsequently found fit for duty, wherein the doctor apologized, as he said he did not know the correct facts, which is in the report. I did comply with the treatment. I am fit for duty. These are facts, and they are undisputed. I have applied for teaching positions, 10 in total, over the last seven months, seven of which were in July of this last month. I am extremely qualified for each of these positions per my qualifications, seniority, evaluations, and high reading scores, and other factors like leadership. Yet I had been unable to obtain any position I applied for. Amazingly, my interviews went well and seemed like my colleagues were impressed with my resume. They liked me, my qualifications, and absolutely looked forward to me joining their school. Yet a few days later, the tone seemed to change, and either they did not accept me or did not contact me at all. The one position I did apply... I did apply for through the staffing surplus vacancy protocol for internal employees per the bargaining contract, and it's a Florida statute, in April of 2023, based on my seniority, which I was number two on the list, and qualifications. I was accepted for one of two available fifth grade ELA social studies positions advertised at Lakeview. When I went to meet the principal after acceptance, I was told I was now going to teach kindergarten, something I never taught in my life, nor did I ever apply for. I was shocked, and I didn't know what to say at the time. I met with Superintendent Dumas and Mr. Hareda regarding this situation. I later sent a letter to HR questioning this after seeing yet another fifth grade ELA social studies position at Lakeview now posted to the public. After telling me I'm going to teach kindergarten, please see the attached letters, 52523. Less than three hours after these emails, I was, I received an email, you know, after the kindergarten position, I received an email from the same principal of Lakeview, Ms. Wheatley, that now she suddenly needed five fifth grade teachers. And not only would I not be teaching ELA social studies, I'd be teaching all subjects in a portable. I did not apply for this.
Mrs. Holmes?
Yes?
I, I was actually going to wait. It's about there. I apologize.
Has it been two minutes?
This is because it's the hearing of citizens for the budget hearing. I didn't want to interrupt you midway through.
I understand.
Do you have a six o'clock meeting? I can certainly ask the board to have that, that these minutes be reflected in the next board meeting, or you'd be, I'd be welcome you to speak at the hearing of citizens.
Okay, if that's more appropriate, I just thought-
I'm so sorry. No, I know we have lots of meetings. I apologize. I didn't want to disrupt it too much, but-
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Next is Shannon Clement and Michelle Posey.
So hi, Shannon Clement. I wrote something, and I'm going to completely throw it out the window because I want to get up here and just say, thank you, sir. Thank you for providing clear, concise, transparent information, making sure that everything is addressed. And I am just, I'm sitting over here completely shocked, as I think half the room is right now. I just want to say thank you for that. And hopefully, with the revised language that's been put back in, you will all agree that the budget as presented, the tentative budget, since the final one's not due until September, will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Posey.
Thank you. Hi, Michelle Posey. Couple of things regarding the budget. As far as the travel expenses for Board Member Tom Edwards, listen, we're not funding CRT or DEI anymore in the state of Florida. So I don't think the taxpayer should be on the hook for his FSBA woke boot camp. So I don't think that's appropriate. But if you do decide to pass that, I would like for the taxpayers to be able to see line item details for what he spends that on. You talked about mistrust. Listen, forming coalitions to work from the inside doesn't exactly reach across the aisle, so I put that back on you. Tying the budget to the strategic plan, we're putting the cart before the horse. The first thing that should have been done was revamping this strategic plan and giving Mr. Connor the ability to do that. This strategic plan was made with recommendations from a equity committee that was formed outside the sunshine. So we should throw it in the garbage where it belongs. No to this tentative budget. Listen, you can change the wording to butterflies and rainbows if it makes you feel better. But bottom line is, we don't want anything with castle partnerships in our district. And this could be done very easily, as it was tried to happen before. Ban castle partnerships with this district and call it whatever you would like. We would all be happy with that. You said we could bring things back before the board as things change. Well, how about this? We ruled out Character Strong because of its ties to SEL, but what happened to the $96,000 that we spent on it? So let's revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the hearing of citizens for, well, hold on one second. For the budget, I have another stack over here for millage, and there was no stack for travel. So bear with us, it's a little bit of a different hearing. Moving on to-
We voted out for budget.
Mrs. Tompkins, I'm sorry, I'm only dealing with what I got here. So this is, so we're actually moving on to the travel. We're going to take action on the travel. Then next from that, can I, I'm going to walk, so after that, then we'll have the hearing for millage. And then I have a whole stack here. I'm fine with listening to everybody at one time, but if, because it seems to be confusing. But, so there were no comments on travel. And then the next item is for the board to take action on the reimbursable travel. Then I would open it up back up to a hearing and call the cards that we collected for that. Does that, everyone here, we're following? Okay. I'm not trying to cut anyone's comment. Moving on, so open, excuse me, pursuant to Florida statute 1001.39, each member of the school district board shall be allowed reimbursement of travel expenses. Travel outside the district that exceeds $500 requires prior approval by the school board confirming travel is for official business for the school board and complies with rules of the State Board of Education. Below is the anticipated in-state travel by school board members in excess of $500 per reimbursement for 2023, 2024. There's no out-of-state travel reimbursement anticipated at this time. There was a, there was a listing of outline for travel, and at this time, I would ask that, is there a motion to approve the reimbursable travel for official business as was presented?
I move that the school board approve the reimbursable travel for a bishop, excuse me, official business as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? Mrs. Rose?
I just would, thank you, Madam Chair. Like to reiterate, certainly the public is, has an opportunity to make comment, but it is a, a school board members legislatively has the right to have reimbursement for travel. I just wanted to reinforce and reiterate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is something that changed back in, I want to say, 2018 or 19, to provide more transparency. I know that I helped in some of the legislation to allow individual board members to determine whether they want to be a part of an organization or not. And then, but I do believe that it is the, as duly elected individual school board members should have the ability to do and seek the professional development that they want. And I don't want to stand in the way, but I do, I'm happy that it is in a transparent format. So for that reason, I will be supporting this. I do have questions, and I'll hold them to a future date. One of them is the consortium, which I think is a board as a whole we're a part of, but we've never discussed that. I've got to table that to a future discussion, but just wanted to highlight that. So if there are no additional comments, we will do a voice vote for this. I will start with Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye and the motion to approve the reimbursable travel for official business as presented passes unanimously. Next, we will open the public meeting for the board to hear public comments regarding the tentative millage rates and answer questions thereto. Just the following millage rates that are, that are being presented to be adopted, the required local effort 2.932 mills, discretionary, discretionary operating 0.748 mills, capital 1.500 mills, voted operating 1.00 mills, equalling a total millage of 6.180 mills. I'm going to open this up to public comment, and then we will entertain a motion. First up, I have Sebastian Gersel and Paulina Testerman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't even know where I'm at anymore after today, so we'll see if I, if I make any sense. Members of the school board, Superintendent Connor, I'm Sebastian Gersel, a junior at Ruvey High School. And today, I'm here in support of funding our schools, our teachers, life-changing programs, and overall the future. But that conviction requires me to also be an advocate for fiscal responsibility. Education is undoubtedly essential, but we must remember that increased taxes does not necessarily lead to improved educational outcomes. Instead of raising the budget and ensuring that residents pay more in taxes, let's focus on enhancing the efficacy of existing resources and identify alternative solutions. Additionally, this budget continues to be unrepresentative of what students truly need. This is shown in detail in the flawed mental health and behavioral health plan the board approved at the last meeting. These programs, many of which are destructive to the true needs of students, continue to push a false idea of what mental health, treatment, and student response truly is. The same can be said for other allocations, funding wasteful programs that only benefit the status quo. So today, I urge the school board to reject waste, higher taxes, and unrepresentation, and instead embrace transparency, accountability, and true representation of the actual needs of students in the classroom. I urge you to end the status quo of wasteful spending and unproductive programs, and vote no on both the tentative millage and budget, because as has been shown today, there's a little bit of confusion by everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paulina Testerman.
Good evening. My name is Paulina Testerman, and I have two children in Sarasota County Public Schools. I'll start off with letting the board know that I'm not an accountant. I don't work in finance. I have enough trouble managing my own family budget, and I know next to nothing about school board budgets. But I'm not here to discuss why the board shouldn't or shouldn't vote on the budget before us. I'm here to warn the board and our community of a dangerous trend that I'm seeing. Yesterday, a New York-based political action committee called 1776 Project PAC tweeted the following, quote, "Sarasota, Florida's school board is set to vote on a new budget tomorrow, which includes $60 million in SEL programs that advance a woke agenda. Email school board members Bridgette Ziegler, Karen Rose, Tim Enos, and Robin Marinelli, and tell them to vote no on the budget." Has anybody stopped to ask themselves why in the world a PAC out of the state of New York is sticking its nose into Sarasota's school board budget information? Why are they trying to bully our school board members into voting against this budget? I presume that the board received countless emails, but it's important that the board members remember that those emails are not your constituents. Sarasota County voters are your constituents. But there's more. Then we hear that a robo-text went out to Sarasota residents echoing the same fear mongering and misinformation, encouraging the recipients the same, quote, "Email school board member Bridgette Ziegler, Karen Rose, Tim Enos, and Robin Marinelli, and tell them to vote no on the budget." Interestingly, both the tweet and the robo-text left off Mr. Edwards' name. I'm sure he doesn't feel left out that the long arm of corruption forgot to include him. I hope Mr. Edwards wears that as an, that as a badge of honor. The board and the community needs to know that this is what it looks like when outside interests are meddling in our local business. These political zealots are worried about school board members that might vote with integrity instead of voting in the best interest of the corrupt politicians who are already pickpocketing our students every single day. I encourage the board to vote in the best interest of teachers, students, and our schools, not unscrupulous politicians. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Vaughn, Liz Barker. If you want to give it to Mrs. Tompkins right over there, and then Mrs. Tompkins, if you just make sure we get a copy and then attach it to the minutes.
Hi. I think you know, but my name is Barbara Vaughn, and I'm a taxpaying homeowner in Sarasota County. And I'm assuming that the millage rate is based on the amount of money the school board needs in your budget. Am I on the right track here? In other words, my taxes that I pay, my homeowner's taxes, will go up if the school board is spending money, as Sebastian indicated, on pointless endeavors. I don't want my money spent on Mr. Edwards' travel when nobody else, including two new members of the board, are going to these annual days and joint conferences. Learn what you need to learn here. This board, several members, could teach these classes better than you going there. So I guess it's too late, but I don't want my tax dollars spent to give him up to $5,000 to travel. And by the way, are you going to come back to us with a request for a referendum vote next year for another, what is it, 1% or whatever, because your teachers need a raise, or they need more supplies in their classrooms? I don't want more money taken from my limited The other thing I want to make perfectly clear, and I will state this again in the regular meeting, changing the language, Mr. Connor, is not enough unless the point is to meet the legal requirements. SEL is against the law. CRT is against the law. And I just read a program the other night that had a lot of pretty words and a lot of new and different words, but it's SEL and bordered by CRT. That's not what we voted on in this state through our representatives. It's not what I pay taxes for. We need to, and on that same subject, I noticed on item nine, approval of agreement between Truly Valued Incorporated and the school board for in-school mentoring. When I looked them up on a Google search, it was listed-
Mrs. Vaughn, we have a six o'clock meeting, and I believe you're talking to an agenda item on that one. So if you would like to hold your comments until then, we would appreciate it. Thank you. We'll see you at six o'clock. Moving on to Liz Barker and Lieutenant Colonel Duffe Smiley.
Superintendent Connor, board members, good evening. I'm Liz Barker, mom of four young children in Sarasota County Public Schools. I'm here this evening to voice my support for the proposed millage and 2023, 2024 tentative budget. Parents and community members understand that we must find common ground to support student achievement. Maintaining our A-rated public schools is our top priority. This budget represents countless hours of cooperative decision-making by the board and Sarasota County school staff. Similar to other organizations, a district's budget reflects its priorities for the year ahead. The 2324 budget funds literacy coaches at each elementary school, pre-K classrooms, added behavior specialists, construction of new school buildings, and a return of professional development to support strong instructional practices. These are required expenditures in order to narrow the achievement gap, support our teachers, and improve student outcomes, priorities that are shared by our entire community. As a community, we reject any attempt to distract, deflect, and divide us as we work toward our shared mission and prioritization of student achievement and success. Thank you.
Thank you. Lieutenant Colonel Duffe Smiley, Julie Barrett.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Connor, you were hired on the day of my wife's birthday, on July 17. So hopefully, that'll be as a good omen for you as it has been for me. I'd like to talk about, are we really getting the most bang for our buck? According to the Digest of Education Statistics, when I graduated from high school, the cost per student was $1,800. When my daughter graduated in 2000, the cost per student was $10,000. These are in $2,008, so I adjusted our $18,000 that we pay per student down to $16,000. So what that works out to, the cost have increased nine times since I graduated and 1.6 times since my daughter graduated in 2000. I don't think across the nation and locally, we have seen the increase in student performance to match the increase in investment. I think it's time to have a manpower study. After adding 21 administrators in the Bowden Asplin regime, and that includes five assistant principals at one high school, and I really have a hard time figuring out how that is not wasteful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Julie Barrett, Carol Ehrner.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment to you today. My name is Julie Barrett, and my family and I are your newest residents and taxpayers in Sarasota. We came here because friends of ours moved from our local area in Western Washington to Sarasota because of your school board. As you're well aware, your school board made national attention for flipping it conservative. So a lot of families are like my friends and mine and moved here because of this school board. I'm going to go off script a little bit here because of the preliminary comments. I sit here listening to you all talk about misinformation and disinformation, and I feel right at home, which- feel right at home, which, coming from Western Washington, I was hoping I didn't feel at home in Florida. I've spent the last week looking through your documents, and the budget is 280-some pages, and then there's the mental health allocation plan. In the mental health allocation plan, you use zones of regulations, you use positive behavioral interventions and supports, and you use Y-TRY. All of these are radical SEL programs. And so you sit here and say, well, we could change the language because people don't like the way SEL sounds. I'm sorry. You can call it whatever you want. You can call it resiliency. You can call it life skills. You can call it whatever you want, but it is still social-emotional learning, and it takes away from the education process. I'm a mom of four children. I have watched, since my oldest was in kindergarten in 2001, I have watched over the two decades of my kids being in school, how SEL has taken root and grown in our public schools. It is very detrimental to students. It is detrimental to their growth. It is detrimental to their mental health. Talk about division. SEL is division. It is divisive. And I think there was the 1776 Project PAC tweet that this gal referenced earlier, mentioned $60 million allocated to SEL programs. When I look through your budget, it looks like it's more around $100 million. I think parents would be stunned to find that out. There are a lot of details in this budget that most of the public are completely unaware of, and I think you greatly underestimate these parents, that they're not paying attention. And it's time for parents to wake up and pay attention and come and start talking at these meetings. And I really hope, this is, as you know, this is my second time here. I was here last week. I felt very dismissed by this board, and I feel that your comments earlier in this meeting were very dismissive, and I hope that you will listen to the concerns of the citizens because they are very warranted. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Carol Lerner and Mary Andrews. I'm sorry. The final speaker is Carrie Lerner. We already heard from Mary Andrews. Carol Lerner.
Good evening. My name is Carol Lerner and support our schools. Let me say from the onset, I very much support the millage and the budget. In fact, I'd like to see more investment in education. I grew up in an era when just about the entire population got behind public schools and their teachers. As a student in the 1950s, the quality of schools varied, but when the Sputnik era arrived with great investments in education, schools vastly improved, at least in New Jersey, where I lived. Investment in education is critically important. It was the GI Bill, the Sputnik Investments in Education, and well-paid union jobs that built the middle class in America, whereas disinvestment in education over the past 40 years has been a factor in the rise of social problems and unrest. And this is not a partisan issue. President Eisenhower, who was president when I was a child, a proud Republican, oversaw one of the greatest investments in education in our nation's history. The attacks on budget through SEL, I believe, is just crazy talk. I just honestly can't believe it. I recently attended Ms. Ziegler's Leadership Institute and heard one of the keynote speakers say that SEL is akin to Chinese brainwashing, and he also put forward all sorts of other really crazy conspiracy theories. And do you notice now, when Governor DeSantis is attempting to export his Stop Woke campaign, his CRT and SEL, do you notice how he's doing and not too many people are buying this? In terms of the Sarasota millage and budget, as I said, I fully support it. But I was also saddened but not surprised when Mrs. Ziegler announced in her July 24th meeting that she would not support even the advertisement of the budget. I replayed the recording three times to understand her reasons and never quite got it. She talked about changes happening with Mr. Connor's arrival, as well as legislative changes. She wants the district to create an off-ramp for compliance, whatever that means. Perhaps Ms. Ziegler should do some soul-searching to figure out who she is serving, because it doesn't seem to be the students here. I trust the other members of the board will approve the budget. Voting against a well-thought-out budget in one of the lowest-ranking states in the U.S. and a district that needs adequate funding to improve student achievement... Anyway, support the budget.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comments. Now, we are on the adoption of the 2023 proposed millage rate. Is there a motion?
I move for adoption of the 2023 proposed millage rates.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? I'm going to comment for this and the budget. So I want to thank everyone for speaking. I apologize the order, the way the open hearing was a little different and clunky. So I will go back and say, I supported the changing of Mrs. Rose's motion about the strategic plan because I think we needed that. We needed to do it quite some time ago, and I think whether it's the changeover of the superintendents, I'm going to seize the opportunity for us to do that. I think that there are elements in there that we can, we need to laser, that we can get out that are destructive, that people may think is the best thing since sliced bread, somebody else does it, and it's just a distraction. I think we need to be laser-focused on the academic components, because I know that's where we all agree. Some of the comments that were made today, I think that highlight, I don't intend to be dismissive, but I do think that there are real concerns, and I share the comments that were made by a recent public comment here. And I think that, it's interesting from an outside perspective is what they mentioned. The comments of SEL is, the reality is, this has been brought up for quite some time. And so whether it's a moving target or not, I know we've had well-intended members of our public come and share and try to help us understand the concerns. I know I've taken some time, quite a bit of time, to understand it, and it's complex, but it is an issue. And I know that in addition to that, it's certainly an issue that the state has jumped in on. And so I have a pause when we change the language, and I recognize that that's happening in other areas as well, but even if we go through the historical aspect of it, at the end of the day, my biggest concern, and that's what I was saying at the last meeting, is what are we changing by way of practice? What are we changing by way of programmatic aspect? What are we changing around those areas? Because anything that keeps us away from our focus on the core academics, I know we talk about reading and being a priority of all of ours, which is an area we can align to, every effort and amount of time, I want to see us focus on that. I think that we, as, I know that three of us were elected truly with this topic in mind of saying we were going to get rid of these items, and it's been hard to discern where it is, and I think a lot of effort has been made to try to get cut through that so that we can get back to the basics, we can get back to business, but unfortunately haven't really been able to do that. But I do believe that it's deeply entrenched in a lot of, a lot more than I think people recognize, into our instructional material and our professional development, because it's been the practice for so long. And so I'm not putting that issue or harm on any of our staff. I think it's just our responsibility to take that seriously, and that's where I've said, Mr. Connor knows this, we've talked about this, about being very strategic about an off-ramp, because it's not one day you can just pull it out and it's all gone, but we've got to be very strategic and focus on this and be honest about it. If I'm the only one up here who thinks that, so be it, but that's not something I'm going to stand, I'm going to walk back on. I'm going to continue to bring it up. I know it's something we've talked about in the past, and it concerns me that we don't really know what we're changing. And I think that that's, and I think that that's a priority. I'm happy to see us move forward with changing the strategic plan. I want to have a deeper dive of understanding, you know, what does the changed language mean by way of practice? Because if there is something that we can highlight to the public that these things are gone, then we can build trust, but I think we have to be very thoughtful about just avoiding semantics and being bound to the practice. So, and finally, I think that when it goes to the millage, to me, that does breed the area of what we need to levy in order to support the budget. And so I'm not supporting this. I know I didn't support it on the 24th, but I want to say, moving forward, I really do want us to take a very serious look at what it is, what these practices are. I don't care, we can call them anything. Call them blue sky. I mean, so it gets the emotion out of it, but there are concerns that it is not, it is not all it's cracked up to be, and it is not moving the needle academically. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting it. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. I guess I still want to go back to Mr. Connor's explanations. I started the meeting once again with high expectations with a new leader who is coming forward with levels of explanation and understanding that I think stunned the room. And once again, I want to say, well done. And here we are, back again, discussing the boogeyman called woke. Everyone, I ask everyone, including myself, what is the definition of woke? And no one can give me one that is consistent, and yet it is a boogeyman that invades the conversation and demoralizes the room, demoralizes our board members, demoralizes the staff, and frankly, demoralizes the students, because I spend a lot of time out in the field talking. But let me explain to you where I have concerns with this budget, because at the end of the day, the one thing I think I can agree with, based upon all the emails that came in, is that I would rather see more money spent on academic achievement. Me too. I agree with that. But let's look at some other areas besides the boogeyman of woke and social-emotional, because it's a moving target. It keeps going. It started with CRT, then it went into LGBTQ+, now it's into SEL, and it just keep changes changing. But here's where I am concerned about this exact budget. We've got a train wreck coming that we have to start working on as soon as this budget is passed, as it relates to ESR dollars. We have to fix that problem, which is a serious problem in how it affects us going into the following school year. That's a concern of mine, and that's a valid concern, and I don't hear any of the public talking about that. Here's another concern that I have of mine: insurance premiums. The millage rate goes to pay for the insurance. We just got walloped in Ian. We had to pass an amendment about insurance rates where we are spending more money for insurance for less coverage and assuming more risk. And guess what? It's hotter in hell the last month and a half, and it doesn't seem to be letting up. And where is that concern? Where is that concern in the budget and how it relates to what's not going into the classroom? And lastly, the one that I pray about, Mrs. Vaughn, the school's safety. I am scared to death that we're going to be on the news because of a mass shooting, and I pray every day for the safety of our students and for our faculty, and yet look at our budget as it relates to safety and security and how it doesn't go into the classroom. And that's where my concerns are. And if the community wanted to get behind things where there's a common ground, those are areas that we all want higher achievements for our students, but those budgets aren't ones that we talk about, and they affect how we spend our dollars. So as far as I'm concerned, that's where we need to be looking, and we are in compliance with the law. We are in compliance with the state, and Mr. Connor made that very clear, as did our attorney. But if we're going to look to get more dollars into the classrooms, that's where I would suggest we look.
Thank you. And if I just may remind board members, in order to try to maintain calm decorum, if we can keep and refrain from calling out members of the public during our discussion. Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank Mr. Connor for taking the time to explain this, and I'm going to be very frank. I think no matter what anybody says or believes from the superintendent or any individual board member, it will never be enough to satisfy certain people. So on the SEL, we will never agree on what that means. I have said here up on the dais, as a retired school counselor, what social-emotional learning meant to children, and it had nothing to do with what is said SEL is by people in the audience or by emails that I get. So I've come to the conclusion that no matter what I say, I will never make everybody happy, and I'm not going to try. But what concerns me most is I listened to a student, Sebastian, and I think he's right as a 35-year veteran of Sarasota County School District. We don't take the time to review what we're doing and if it is working. And I will admit, I was probably part of that problem, thinking that I was doing what was right for kids, and I still will say that. But we never really reviewed what we're doing, and we never really involved students, except in the spring, when we bring a whole group of the students from every high school and we talk about things. But I would like to suggest and have the superintendent think about it, I'm not, I'm just asking, to start bringing in students from the different schools, and what are we doing, especially in the mental health area? Is it what they need? It's not what we think they need. We can make that work, but are we really delivering the best services to what the kids say they need? And I also think we need to do it with a lot of the other things that are in this. This is a fluid document. I'm going to support it, but that doesn't mean I can't come back in two weeks and say, oh, look what I found. Or Superintendent Connor's going to say, you know what? We really don't need this. I'm going to vote for it, but it doesn't mean it's always going to stay this way. And I do think we need to take a look at staff, but this superintendent's been on the job for 10 days. You can't get things done in 10 days that has been going on for seven years. And if we're going to focus on student achievement, that is our number-one thing, because whether we like it or not, our scores have gone down. Eighth grade science tied for 10th. This is data. You can't argue with it. So this is where we need to focus, and we need to get it back there. And that's what I'd like to see happen, and give the superintendent time to figure out what in the world is going on, because we know, I know, there are issues. But you're not, it's not going to be done overnight, and sending me all the emails in the world is not going to change that fact. So all I'm asking is give this man time to find it and get it cleaned up, because I believe he will. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this budget. I want our staff, teachers, and schools to be able to go forward. I have confidence that with the structures that Mr. Connor has already put in place in 10 days on accountability for curriculum and following the mandates that have come out through the legislature curriculum-wise, and a system of accountability, that we will be in compliance. So unless, I think it's, Madam Chair, extraordinarily important to me, my commitment to this community for safety, for academic achievement, for quality schools, and as a constitutional officer, to be within not only the law, but the intent of the law as it has come out of legislation and been signed by Governor DeSantis. So unless, Madam Chair, you can tell me what is not in compliance, line item by line item, I will be supporting this budget and given the work that I pursued through legal counsel, to assure me from a legal perspective that we are in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll respond to that. I know Mr. Duggan also, and I spoke about this. With the language change, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the legalese of it, so I'll defer to him, but it is such that with the changing of the language doesn't necessarily change the practice, and I think that we are not necessarily understanding that. necessarily understanding what that change ultimately means, and I want to be honest and transparent about that. For that reason, I do not support this. I think there's a lot more, I think there's a lot of layers in it that, again, have been a practice within public education for quite some time, and I, these are conversations I've had with members of staff, because I think everyone's trying to figure it out for the most part. I don't think anyone's trying to put anything nefarious in there, but I think that we also have to be thoughtful of, when there are concerns or we are trying to line up with legislation or legal language, being thoughtful of, okay, so we changed the language, but what did we change the practice? Now, I know, I understand that over some time, as was highlighted, that it appears that staff had changed those things, but I just think that we warrant a little bit closer look. Mrs. Rose.
But specifically, right now, as I plan to vote and support this, I'm not hearing you give me any specific program that meets the specificity of SEL as the stated in the intent of the law. I want to be able to go forward and fund this district, and again, have confidence that if that surfaces, that it will be remediated, and there are structures that have been put in place and actually sent to board members that give us added accountability that we haven't had in the past seven years, and I thank Superintendent Connor for the work he's done in 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Mr. Edwards.
I just want to echo, was it, did you call me?
I did say Mr. Edwards, and then Mr. Enos. I'll get to you right afterwards. Thank you so much.
I want to reiterate that I agree with what Mrs. Marinelli has said, and I know Mrs. Ziegler and I have talked about that for a long, long, long time, about reviewing programs and making sure which ones are we keeping and which ones are working and which ones are not. And that's a conversation that I had specifically with Mr. Connor and all of the candidates who were coming on board, because I agree with you. There has to be a rationale on an ongoing basis of what we're buying that's new and better and what we're getting rid of that's not working. And that's, in my personal opinion, from where I come from, it's called continuous improvement, and that's, I just, once again, think that that's a common approach to getting the work done and achieving the academic results that we're looking for. I also want to just reiterate, which I think is missed in, on the public, and I want to go back for one more second. I'm less focused on SEL and the definition of all of that, and more focused in on the kind of work that we did as a board that does talk about academic achievement, particularly as it relates to the achievement gap and the third-grade reading scores. This board made a commitment to pre-K and had that conversation. We learned in our reading plan that the enhancement from last year's reading plan to this year's reading plan showed a specific improvement for our English-language learners. We are advancing, we learned also in elementary, particularly in our Title I schools, which I don't think we do as a board a good enough job of explaining, that 50, almost 50% of our community is at or below the poverty line, which means it puts them into the Title I category, and that population by its very nature is unfortunately more transient than some of our other students. And so, what we've done in general, and I'm paraphrasing, a heck of a lot of work that went into creating this budget that really was specific to growing and improving our third-grade reading scores and distanced ourselves from those kinds of conversations and focused this board on academic achievement. So, in that, I just wanted to throw that one little reminder out there that this, we shouldn't walk away feeling that we didn't do a good job on this budget. We did a heck of a good job on this budget, and there are plenty of new ideas and suggestions that Mr. Connor can take and run with and improve in that continuous improvement model. So, board, staff, community, it's a good budget.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Enos.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak via Zoom. You know, I think that everybody brings up many, many valid points that look to that when we especially will get safety and security, we'll look at third grade, we look at the scores that recently came out. You know, I also believe with you, Madam Chair, in reference to, you know, the programming and what's out there, also, you know, with the rest of the board, with Ms. Rose, Ms. Marinelli, Mr. Edwards, you know, ultimately, it's, you know, the budget is such a complex, complexity, and I know the best practice is to align your budget with your strategic goals. We know the strategic goals, again, thank you, that we are going to be looking at those because those actually need to be revamped, because when do you have strategic goals? I don't actually have what is the mission of a district, which is to improve education scores, which that strategic plan does not do that at all, which is ultimately what we are striving for is not to be just the best in Florida, but the best in the nation, and you can't do that if you don't have goals that actually relate to whatever the mission of the district is, which is educating our kids. So, my understanding of this as being a tentative budget, and if, you know, at this point moving forward, is also, you know, I've always spoke about the accountability piece, and that accountability piece is that if there are any of those programs that, you know, the public is bringing up, if, as they are, the budget is transparent, they would like to email in reference to specific programs as to, looking at them in specific to what the Florida State statute is, and also having, you know, confidence in Mr. Duggan and his ability as giving legal guidance, and that I'm all about compliance with Florida State statute, is that also as we look at this in regard to that accountability piece is, you know, it is the expectation that we will be in compliance, and we will not be in violation if we have found that any of those are, that they'll be immediately, you know, we'll end up stopping them and then moving on and making changes as we go forward, because obviously there's different things, like Mr. Edwards talks about in reference to the hurricane. You know, obviously, that's not anticipated monies that we were looking to spend, but it's just part of living, you know, in our beautiful community. You know, so with that, I would, you know, I'd be approving both of them, but with, you know, as it is a tentative budget, it's a tentative approval, tentative approval in reference to that, making sure that that accountability piece is that we're not violating the law in those programs that we are currently doing, and that I would request that anyone has specifics on the programs, is that obviously there still can be changes and amendments as we have talked with Ms. Penner before, as we move forward, and, you know, with Mr. Connor, I know with him doing the explanation, thank you, Mr. Connor, I greatly appreciate that, because it looks like it's all personal services, a majority of that piece. You know, I think that it's, you know, looking at that with that massive budget that we have, that compliance and accountability piece, as I know this is the year of accountability, and we've all spoke that, you know, that I'm looking forward, excuse me, to anything that's not in compliance to be brought forward. I appreciate the time to talk.
Thank you very much. I'll just conclude with the comments looking ahead that Mr. Edwards even mentioned is, and I know, Mr. Connor, as you've talked about that, programmatically looking at things, particularly as it pertains to reading and looking at those programs to see if those areas that we are able to dive in and see what's working, what's not, and actually execute upon those changes. So, all of those things are exciting as we look ahead. If there are no additional comments, I will ask that we do a roll call votes, and just to refresh, this is that we are voting on the following millage rates first, and then after this will be a motion for the budget. So, I'll start with Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Enos.
Yes.
And the chair votes no, and the motion to adopt the following millage rates passes 4 to 1. Moving on to the next item of business for the board's budget, is there a motion? Item number six.
I move for adoption of the 2023, 2024 tentative budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any comments? I know we, all right, seeing none. After the lengthy discussion before, we'll do a voice vote as well. Mrs. Marinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Enos.
Yes.
And the chair votes no, and the motion to approve the 2023, 2024 fiscal year tentative budget passes 4 to 1. We, that concludes any action items for this special meeting. If there are no additional comments, we will conclude and recess for five minutes and then come back at our regular scheduled board meeting at 6:35. We stand adjourned.